We are back. Welcome back. That was not a power move at all. I just want to get going. My apologies to our community for being tardy. So, beginning this evening. Roll call, please. Oh, that was open session. Oh, wrong page. Expressing my humanity today. So we've called back to order. Pledge of Allegiance, please. Next up, item 4.2 Broadcast Statement.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded and will be cablecast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will be aired Saturday, February 3rd at 1:00 p.m. and Monday, February 5th at 6:00 p.m. It is also webcast at metro14live.saccounty.net and can be viewed on Metro Cable 14's YouTube channel. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form, which are located in the back of the room, and give them to our communications representative along with any handouts you may have for the board prior to the conclusion of the items' presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is listed on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda. Please also either turn off your cellphones or place them on silent mode.
Thank you kindly. 4.3 Stellar Student. I'll be introducing my stellar student today. Our stellar student is Melanie Rea. Melanie Rea, hi Melanie. Front and center. Melanie is a student at Hollywood Park Elementary School. From kindergarten through sixth grade, she's been there. She embodies what it means to be a stellar student and a superstar. Hardworking, trustworthy, responsible, and respectful are just a few of the adjectives the staff and students at Hollywood Park Elementary would use to describe her. As a member of our leadership club, Melanie facilitates and participates in community service projects, school-wide events, and works to build school spirit. In addition to maintaining an excellent academic record, Melanie is also a member of the school basketball team. She's a phenomenal role model for her peers and has the qualities needed to be a successful student and a future leader. Hollywood Park Elementary School is so proud to have been a part of her educational journey, and me, the board, and everyone at Hollywood Park Elementary can't wait to see how she makes her mark in the world. Whatever her future holds, we are proud to say Melanie Rea will always be a superstar. And speaking of stars, I hear that space is on a list for one of your adventures, right? Very good. So I'm going to allow you to have a word and talk to your public and your family who's here to support you.
Giving this award, I would like to receive, I would like to thank my principal, Ms. Luke, and my teacher, Ms. Bliss, for all of their support.
Fantastic. So I have a special certificate for you, and like we do all the time, Mr. Allen's going to get down and we're all going to take picture with you. You ready? Great job. Item 5.0 Announcement of Action Taken in Closed Session. Madam Counsel.
Good evening, President Phillips. There are two announcements coming out of closed session this evening. First, the board approved a special education settlement agreement identified as OAH Case Number 2023100404 by a vote of 5 to 0 with members Pritchett and Villa absent. The board also approved a settlement agreement related to special education services by a vote of 5 to 0 with members Pritchett and Villa absent. That is all.
Thank you. Item 6.0 Agenda Adoption. So moved. Seconded by Member Rhodes. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 7.0 Public Comment.
President Phillips, we have four speakers signed up.
Fantastic.
First speaker this evening is Dr. Erin Kaplan, followed by Yancy.
Hello, Dr. Kaplan. Mic is yours.
Hello. My name is Dr. Erin Kaplan, and I am an educator and parent of two students in SCUSD. Last week, I received a very upsetting phone call from my eight-year-old school telling me that due to Concap procedures, he would no longer have a place at his school for fourth grade. As a parent and a longtime educator, and as a strong advocate for public education, I say that this is unacceptable. My son was one of the last six students admitted to his cohort in the second grade when we moved cross-country, and he had a very difficult year academically and socially emotionally. He was in a new state, in a new home, in a new school, and knew no one. Now, as a third grader, he has adjusted and is doing excellently well. He has a friend group, is active in an onsite after-school program, has found supportive teachers and administrators who work with him in his 504 plan, and is generally quite happy. And now, we have to move him again. If there is anything that children need in school, in life, to excel, it's stability. For the six students who are being unceremoniously expelled from this school, you as a governing body are introducing further instability. We were told that he would attend the first two weeks of school, after which time there would be a census, and he would be invited to attend whichever schools have room. Please read here the least successful and least resourced schools where parents do not want to send their children, regardless of location, and that no busing would be provided. How dare you do this to children across the district each year? This is bigger than me and my son, Teo. This is about system-wide choices that are made that hurt children, the children that you are tasked with caring for and educating. I'm sure your response is going to be that it's a question of resource allocation, and I am here to tell you that I am uninterested in excuses. I have worked in public schools across the U.S. for the last 20 years, and I have never seen anything this neglectful. These choices have real human impact on the families in this district. And moreover, if your concerns are financial, then you need to create a public education system that is student and family-centered, because as we continue to degrade public education, families who can afford to leave will, and the public schools will continue to suffer, exacerbating the ongoing assault against public education in this country and further deepening the chasm between rich and poor. Today, I ask this body to begin a thorough and thoughtful reconsideration of the Concap policy and that it be included in your formal agenda in the next three months. While it might not change things for Teo in September, doing so could help create stability for numerous families in the future, and that is what public education is supposed to be about, coming together as a community in solidarity to ensure that the next generation of children have access to equitable, inclusive, and quality public education. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Yancy.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Am I talking into the mic? Y'all can hear me? I just wanted to get like a personal testimony. I'm a, my name is Yancy, founder of Young &amp; Building LLC. The purpose of Y&amp;B is to build a pipeline to support underserved opportunity youth. I have a mentoring program called the Believe in Youth Mentoring Program, where we establish rapport, build community, and provide, we promote entrepreneurship for the students. Essentially, we teach the kids how to make the clothing, market the clothing, and wear the clothing. We try to kill the clothing insecurity. I came to comment a little bit about the new policy you guys put in place, sexual abuse and molestation insurance. I'm a newly father, so I wasn't aware of everything that was going on, going into the summer. So I didn't know about the insurance until it was time to pay me. They cease and desist my contract within 20 minutes. It took about four months to get my, everything kind of like back up and running, and even then, when I felt as if everything was sent in, it didn't take 20 minutes to reinstate me. My frustration is the lack of urgency in communication. When it comes to the babies, I feel like y'all took my program away at a time that they need us most. I'm a foster kid. I understand holiday season and things that go on around that time. This is when the babies need to see our face, and I just wanted to let you guys know. My ask is, when it comes to the policies, make it tears, like I'm not sure, I'm not sure what I ask. I ask that like, when it comes to big businesses and small businesses, we all don't have the same policies, because it's not sustainable. I don't feel like I need two minutes, and that's all I really wanted to say. I appreciate you guys. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Eliah Bassin. He has one additional card for a total of four minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Bassin.
I think there should have been, oh, there's some big packets coming. They were also emailed to you earlier in the week. I don't expect you to go through them all right now. Before I introduce myself, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to make sure that I give credit to all the equity groups who have been working on hard topics and have presented at the board in these previous years. I've been following all those meetings, and I appreciate your time. My name is Eliah Bassin. I'm a parent of two children in the school district. After being involved in the district for five years, listening to more than half of the board meetings, and volunteering on campus, I began to look deeper into the district policies that allow forcing 4% of the students and staff to change schools after the first day of school. The second disturbing topic is around the district's policy allowing high enrollment burdens and outright barriers to entry, such as those at Phoebe Hurst this Saturday. For months, I've escalated these findings up through the staff, and while I appreciate the time that they've given me, I have yet to receive any indication of the urgent action needed on these items. I've submitted the 20-page report. If you want more details, there, I have many parents who would like to do a longer presentation, but out of the deepest respect for all of you members being here and your time, we are going to try and make this a format presentation, and we really do appreciate you all for being here. I'm going to do, on this slide for the public, it shows on the blue line to the left, shows 17% of the white kids at Sacramento Unified School District, and the blue section on the right shows that 40% of those white students go to one of the few schools with enrollment Sheet is my favorite sheet. On the blue line, it shows the percentage of white students enrolled at the elementary school, and the red line is showing how many students are moved over the past three years. And you can see at the end the strong correlation that when the schools become above-average white, the students that are forced to move schools drastically changes. And then, our last one, it's a pie chart that shows the socioeconomic barriers. If you are above average in the disadvantaged category, your odds of having to change schools are three times those of the students who are below average of the disadvantaged. Thank you very much. When getting these posters printed just yesterday, the staff and I were talking about how much students have to spend on presentations now. And I said, "Oh, I'm printing these posters for a presentation at the board about how our district has racist actions." And the staff said, "Oh yeah, that's why I'm taking my kids back to the country where I come from." Luckily, that family is from a safe enough European country. Lucky for them. But we make, but we make the point that we are hurting and losing valuable people through the processes we have. The original actions at Phoebe Hurst were to allow entrance to this exam by a secret handshake. When the district's legal representative said in writing the district was closed during the winter break, so all their Public Records Act request timelines were on hold, the same district secretly opened the online signup for the Phoebe Hurst engines exam. That secret exam was filled before the first day of kids returning back from winter break, almost a month before, quote, "open enrollment" even started. After multiple people reached out, the district opened more spots in the signup. Now that there's more signups, there's going to be many more children that can fall, fail this bizarre test, thus a massive legal liability for the district. This is a massive legal liability, because I put over 100 hours researching and interviewing, and there is absolutely nothing that validates testing four- to five-year-olds in the manner the district is doing and determining someone's educational opportunities in this illegal test. The district absolutely should not be wasting our legal funds by allowing the widest school sites to conduct segregation. We now have an independent monitor, but we have to pay for that independent monitor, and right now, I'm giving you free monitoring and saving possibly vast legal costs if the district knowingly publicly walks us down a documented path of segregation. Board members, we elected you. None of you ran on the platform of school choice but with segregation policies. And Superintendent Allen, I really thank you for being here, and I don't know your thoughts, and I'm guessing you agree to the role as an interim in between, and you don't think it's maybe the job as an interim to make drastic changes to some of our wealthiest sites. But we elected you, board, and we're glad you're here, and Ms. Allen, the board put their confidence in you, and I think it is our job to shield the district from this great liability. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
No more speakers.
Thank you. Item seven, no, we just did that. Item eight, communications. Public comment? No? 8.1 Employee Organization Reports.
Good evening, member, Madam President and members of the board. I'll be brief tonight. Nikki Malevsky, I'm president of the Sacramento City Teachers Association, and well, we're getting close. Since the school board last met on January 18th, we have met three more times with the district's negotiating team, including most recently last night in this very room. We meet again on Monday, when we hope to get this agreement wrapped up. We are hopeful that not only will we resolve Article 12 compensation and Article 17 about class size and staffing, but we also hope to resolve a number of long-term outstanding issues that were a product of the previous administration's adversarial approach to labor relations. The improvements in the district since July 1 of 2023 have been like night and day, which is why we are optimistic about bringing these negotiations to a conclusion on Monday and starting our hiring season with a clear contract and collaboratively working together to hire the best teachers for our students. We especially want to recognize the significant change in direction and focus from this board. You have changed this district from one that had prioritized accumulating as much money as possible in the district's reserve fund, no matter the expense to the students, to a board that prioritizes the needs of students. This new direction from the majority of this board of being fiscally responsible while making improvements to students' learning conditions a priority is exactly what our students need and is what our staff and our parents have been advocating for, for years. We hope that the approval of our contract is one of the items we'll see on the agenda for the next school board meeting. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Next up, SEIU. Teamsters. Moving on. Item 8.2 District Advisory Committees. First up, Student Advisory Council. Thank you. Community Advisory Committee. District English Learner Advisory Committee, D-LAC. Local Control Accountability Plan. Your LCAP, sir?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Superintendent Allen, President Phillips, and esteemed members of the board. My name is Junior Goris. I'm an LCAP member, Area 6, and I'll keep my comments brief as far as our report. The PAC met with representatives from the Black African-American Advisory Board, Community Advisory Community, I'm sorry, Community Advisory Committee for Student with Disabilities and the District English Learner Advisory Committee on January 2nd. This was the second of three meetings, and the last one is scheduled for April 22nd. The purpose of the meeting was to review the 2023 California School Dashboard, review the district's strengths and most pressing areas of unmet needs, and review the draft LCAP framework with the CDE requirement, required LCAP template, including of our district's draft goals. Most importantly, the PAC wanted to meet with these members from the B, the B-A-B, CAC, and D-LAC to receive must-have feedback for student groups with high levels of unmet needs, as indicated by the lowest performance indicators on the California School Dashboard and several areas. These student groups include African-American students, American Indian, Alaska Native students, English learners, foster youth, youth experiencing homelessness, and students with disabilities. The notes collected from each group were transcribed and sent out to each of the generating groups. D-LAC, for example, after the meeting, via the district department liaison to determine the level of completeness for their feedback and to make any additional modifications or the recommendations if needed. Our next regular meeting for PAC will be on February 13 from 6 to 8, and we invite the public to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, B-A-B. It's a Black African-American Advisory Board. Mr. Gladney, the mic is yours. There's a little button on the side.
Oh, no, it just feels shorter than normal. Good evening. B-A-B exists because over the course of this district and the course of education in America, Black history has also equaled Black futures. The same history of students, of Black students in education has always equaled their future. We have to start doing something different. B-A-B exists because at a point in time in 2018, the daily experiences of Black students became public, and this district reacted, the superintendent at the time reacted, and said that we need to do something different. In that time, we've done a lot of work, but the outcomes have pretty much remained the same. Doesn't mean that our urgency has decreased or waned, it means it has heightened. Our hope this month in Black History Month was that the resolution that will come before you guys next will be different, but will be built on the foundation of previous resolutions in recent history that did hold people accountable to timelines and actions. While that's not what's on paper, we remain hopeful in partnership with you and with staff that we will be able to work towards that, and we understand the importance of governance and policy and process, but until it's been amended, precedence is process. So it's a little disappointing that what happened for some students doesn't seem to be what's necessary for the students that have carried historic failures in this district for generations. That being said, Saturday, we walk forward in partnership, in hope, with board members, with staff. We'll be heading down to the Bay Area for a professional development summit, because, you know, we sustain despite the pains of our ancestors. We still fight for our babies in the same way that many of our community partners do, even when the acknowledgement, even when the outcomes aren't what we wish. We have been present in the LCAP joint committee spaces consistently. We have been present in multiple spaces to speak on behalf of the scholars unable to do so on their own. We just ask that, you know, as we continue to move forward, at some point, we see a reflection of the urgency we carry every day, because for some of these babies, there is no tomorrow without our advocacy, without our service, and we have to act as if this is a natural disaster, right? When a natural disaster happens, you know, nationally or in the state, we issue a state of emergency. What is the threshold for this district to issue a state of emergency on the, on the, on behalf of Black students? I'll leave that with you guys, and then I'll come back up after the resolution is presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 9.0 Special Presentation, which is 9.1 to approve the Resolution Number 3381, Recognition of National Black History Month, February 2024. It's long. I'm going to read it all. Whereas National Black History Month is a national tradition established in response to incomplete and biased depictions of Black history and African-American communities and historical documents in school curricula, and whereas it is essential to recognize that Black history extends far beyond the era of slavery, encompassing a rich tapestry of experiences, achievements, innovations, and cultural contributions that have played a crucial role in shaping the world we live in today. Whereas African-Americans shaped our world and nation in countless ways, those recognized, unrecognized, and unrecorded, and whereas the contributions of African-American citizens, scientists, inventors, educators, farmers, homemakers, elected officials, clergy, service people, entertainers, athletes, and explorers of earth and sky have been recognized annually during National Black History Month. And whereas, and I'm going to read this slowly, 2023 California School Dashboard results show significant disproportionality in the outcomes for Black students compared to all district students. Specifically, the district's graduation rate is 84% for all students and only 74% for Black students. The district's suspension rate is 6% for all students and 15% for Black students. The district's college and career indicator shows that 33% of all students are prepared for post-secondary college and career opportunities, but only 12% of our Black students are prepared. The chronic absenteeism rate for all students is 29%, but 49% for Black students. And finally, 30% and 17% of Black students were meeting grade-level standards in ELA and math respectively, while 38% and 29% of all students met grade-level standards in ELA and math respectively. And whereas within our district, there are a total of 5,673 students who received special education services during the 2022-23 school year, a total of 1,042, 18.4% of these were African-American students. Of the district's 2022-23 enrollment of 37,289 students, a total of 4,426, 11.9% of these were African-American students. Thus, African-American students are disproportionately represented within the population of our students receiving special education services. And whereas the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education adopted 13 recommendations at the advisement of the African-American Task Force, now the B-A-B, whereas during Black History Month and throughout the year, the district is committed to fostering inclusivity and equity by creating anti-biased, anti-racist working and learning environments, exploring Black history, and providing culturally relevant educational experiences that can serve to close healthy oppor, sorry, close health opportunity and achievement disparities for Black students, employees, and families. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education does hereby recognize the month of February as Black History Month to celebrate the experiences and contributions of SCUSD Black students, families, staff, and community members. Be it resolved that the Board of Education Be it resolved that the Board of Education will encourage all staff and members of the community to recognize and celebrate National Black History Month through culturally relevant activities and programming. Be it resolved that this board encourages the promotion of cultural awareness, fostering an environment where students and educators alike appreciate the richness of Black history throughout the entire year. Be it resolved that during Black History Month, the district will prominently display symbols and representations that celebrate the heritage and contributions of Black and African-American communities. Not done. Be it resolved that this school board is dedicated to presenting a more holistic narrative of Black history that transcends stereotypes and the confines of a singular chapter such as slavery and incorporates the countless stories of Black resilience, triumph, and excellence through the ages and across subject matters. Be it resolved that in an effort to provide educators and students with resources for teaching and learning Black history, the district will examine and improve the curriculum adoption process across all subject matters to ensure inclusivity of Black history and experience. Be it resolved that this board expects educators to incorporate diverse perspectives into their instruction, ensuring that students are exposed to the full spectrum of Black history, including but not limited to pre-colonial civilizations, contributions of Black inventors, leaders, artists, scientists, and trailblazers in various fields. Be it resolved that the district ardently supports policies, practices, and curricula that honor and respect the diverse histories, cultures, and achievements of Black African-American students, staff, and their families. Be it resolved that the district advocates for laws that promote the representation, inclusion, and privacy of Black African-American people. The district vehemently opposes laws that perpetuate negative stereotypes, limits discussions on Black history and experiences, or restrict the provision of culturally sensitive education. The district is committed to opposing any legislation that undermines the celebration and understanding of Black African-American heritage. Be it resolved that the district in partnership with staff and community partners will review feedback from listening sessions with Black students and families and continue to examine academic discipline and suspension practices and outcomes with the intent to inform ongoing improvement efforts in these areas. Be it resolved that the district will expand existing academic, culture, and climate, mental health, and attendance supports, and resources specific to furthering Black student achievement and well-being into a comprehensive toolkit to be provided to staff across all SCUSD departments and sites for the 2024-25 school year. Be it resolved that the district will continue to expand school-to-college and school-to-career opportunities and partnerships in our local Black community to support efforts in raising awareness about opportunities that can be key in keeping students engaged in academic and social life. And be it resolved that the district will continue to provide and expand professional learning that supports educator exploration of Black history, the development of anti-racist and anti-biased practices, and the design of culturally relevant learning experiences in order to address health, opportunity, and achievement disparities for Black students, employees, and families. It was long, it was necessary. I hope that we can continue working in this. That was the presentation. Do we have a public comment, sir?
We do have one speaker, Terrence Gladney.
Mr. Gladney, it's yours.
I do want to first acknowledge Mr. Danny Rurileri, who is our B AAAB Staff Liaison for his hard work. I was literally in Seattle this past weekend supporting a couple of my scholar athletes at a track meet, and he was calling me, working feverishly to push this forward and incorporate many of the recommendations based on, you know, historical resolutions that have been passed around Black History Month, but also through his work with us at B AAAB. So thank you, Danny. And I do want to acknowledge that this is leaps and bounds above what has been presented, but, you know, we have to model for our babies to reach for the sky. So this is great, but, you know, it's never enough, right? Until the outcomes change. A couple of things to highlight on the fifth whereas statement, just for the record, 2023 could be any year in SCUSD. The second-to-last whereas statement that acknowledges the recommendations that were adopted by the task force, I would like you guys to possibly consider following or amending that statement with an additional whereas statement that acknowledges that the unfulfilled recommendations are now, you know, under the custody or the advisement of the B AAAB. I think it's important to, you know, list the organization by name. You guys adopted the body and the recommendations. So additionally, if you guys could inject the recommendations by name so that as they are refined and made relevant to whatever point we are in time, we have a checkpoint in a roadmap. I do like the language being actionable. There's a whereas statement or a resolved statement that talks about the board is dedicated, that the board expects. I would also like you guys to consider, you know, we're talking about community partners again, to uplift B AAAB as an organization by name. And also, if you guys would consider listing some sort of statement that talks about prioritizing Black students by name in documents such as the LCFF or LCAP and other documents so that Black students can see themselves as a priority in this district. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more speakers.
Thanks. Board discussion. Mr. Sane.
Try to scooch in to this side. I'll try to keep it brief, too. I'll start with a quote, one of my favorite quotes. Malcolm X said that "Education is the passport to the future; for tomorrow belongs to those who prepare for it today," and raising what Mr. Gladney said, "These babies can't wait till tomorrow." When we elevate our Black students who are amongst our lowest performing, we actually elevate all of our children. I think it's important to note this and state it out loud because so often, this is used as a divisive measure to say that we are only focusing on one group, or we are not thinking about all our children. We are, but in order to really elevate all our kids, we need to make sure that the folks at the bottom are brought up. And one example is that for a demographic, as we've listed here in our whereas statement that states that our Black students have a chronic absenteeism rate of 49%, we should really be thinking about the actual specific changes we can make, especially from a policy level, to help lessen expulsions and suspensions for our Black students, but also for all students. If students are struggling to stay in the classroom, they're not making to school on time, they're skipping school or missing school, suspending them or expelling them is not the solution to building a proper educational outcome for them in the future. And this does not take away the fact that I absolutely believe in discipline. I believe that we do need to discipline our children in a way that actually gets them to commit to their education, and we continue to find alternative ways to help them get there, and simply removing them from the classroom is not always the best way to do that. So, thank you.
Thanks. Any of my other colleagues? I guess that just gives me one moment to speak. Black History Month, in all of my 50-some-odd years, has been... Let me restate that. Being Black in America is difficult. And a lot of what we're discussing here in this wonderful resolution, how we manage to get it uplifted in the society that we live in, will always be a concern to me. And I really want to appreciate the work that has been done. I also want to highlight the need for this being pushed in a way that is revolutionary. And this is a lot of data. It says a lot when you think about what percentage of American population Black folks are, and these numbers are so ridiculously high, saying that it is specifically Sacramento City Unified School District's problem is not as comfortable. I don't, I mean, I realize it's something that we need to be working on, but it is a national problem, and I think it comes down to, again, recognizing the racist education system, the way it has been designed to hurt our children, and I'm not sure how we could turn that on its head to really highlight what is causing this. And I know a lot of times I get up here in front of folks and I talk about, you know, white people and Black people, and, you know, people feel in some kind of way, but I really feel like, you know, if we as a board are going to be comfortable with the changes that we're going to be making and supporting, that we have to continue to reflect in the reasons why we are where we are today. So, you know, I just, I wanted to share that because normally, when we talk about, like, other resolutions, and they're all really exciting, and, like, I would love to hear other takes from my peers, but I do understand that it's a difficult conversation to have when we're talking about deficits. But please don't be afraid to have these difficult conversations. Don't be afraid to talk about what makes you feel uncomfortable because that's where your growth comes from. So, I am good. Anyone else? Then we are good. That's a wonderful action item. Can I entertain a motion for that? Roll call, please. Oh, student.
Aye. Member Jean? Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Pass.
Next slide of 9.2, just moving on. Literacy, English Language Arts, and Mathematics Update. Ms. Pella and Ms. Hanson, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving Dr. Pella and I the opportunity to share our critical work in the areas of English Language Arts and Mathematics. I will be sharing our updates, but we are both available for questions and discussion after. Thank you, Dr. Pella. Oh, I have to turn the clicker on. Okay. Danielle told me what to do. There we go. Here we go. Okay. As always, we will begin by anchoring into our core value and guiding principle. As you'll recall from last meeting's culture climate presentation, our team firmly believes that as instructional leaders, we have both a professional responsibility and a moral imperative to vigilantly work to confront and interrupt inequities that exist in our system. In curriculum and instruction, we work collaboratively across content areas and teams to interrupt disproportionate student outcomes by providing our adults with the high-quality professional learning and resources they need in order to serve our SAC City students. This evening, we will share with you what our current district-wide supports and investments in literacy, ELA, and math look like, how we measure student outcomes, and what that data tells us about our student needs. We will end by sharing what's on the horizon for literacy, ELA, and math, and what you, our board, can be thinking about as you consider future priorities and investments. Our ELA and math teams are housed in the Curriculum and Instruction Department in the Academic Office under our CAO, Ms. Wright. In ELA, you can see that our Director of Professional Learning, formerly Dr. Pella, oversees numerous content areas in teams in addition to ELA and literacy, including history, social studies, and world languages, as well as our libraries and textbook services. On the ELA team, we have three training specialists who work alongside the six multilingual literacy training specialists. On the math team, led by Dr. Makila, or led by Makila Fetzer, who also supports the sciences, educational technology, and physical education, we have one math coordinator and six training specialists. In these roles, they provide support to school sites and centralized professional learning. From CNI, we provide curriculum resources, specifically district-adopted instructional materials and training, instructional supports in the form of limited job-embedded coaching and supports at sites, and centralized and site-based professional learning to management and certificated staff in the areas of high-quality instruction and anti-biased, anti-racist, trauma-informed principles and practices. I know you have all been introduced to the PL catalog we released last month for certificated staff, but as a snippet on the next slide, you can see some of the PL offered by our training specialists this winter and spring. In order to measure student progress and performance in ELA and math, we need to use both summative and formative assessments. Summitive assessments are those given one time per year. You can think of these as an assessment of learning, measuring what students learned over the course of study. They inform our programmatic decisions and resource allocation, but not specifically instructional and intervention design as they lack specificity and timeliness. Formative assessments are given at more frequent intervals. You can think of these as assessments for learning, as they allow educators to frequently get a read on student needs, monitor progress, and design learning experiences to meet the specific needs of students in that group. Formative assessments can be types of progress monitoring assessments that are listed here. So you have DIBELS, IREDDI, elementary, reading and math, secondary interim assessments, et cetera. But they can also be nearly anything a teacher does to deliberately gather data about student progress, so quizzes, written reflections, exit tickets, intentional dialogue, surveys, and more. The formative assessments listed, along with those our educators design and curate for their students, allow teachers to give, to change course to impact student learning in the moment. From a district level, formative assessments guide our central office teams to design and deliver professional learning and allocate our limited resources to sites and classrooms where they are most needed. Centrally, we offer and support formative progress monitoring assessments in both ELA and math using IREDDI reading and math, DIBELS, which is an assessment of early literacy skills, and math diagnostic interim and placement exams. On the following slides, we will give you a very high-level snapshot of what we're seeing on both our summative and formative assessments. In ELA, our annual summative assessment, the SBACK, 39% of our students in grades 3 through 8 and 11 met grade-level standard in reading, which represents about a 2% average drop in student scores from the prior year. For IREDDI and DIBELS, our formative assessments, I'm sharing the participation rates with you this evening. As you can see, we have inconsistent implementation of these assessments. So you have 69% in grades 1 through 8, 9 through 12, 14%, and then in DIBELS, these are the actual numbers of students who were administered this assessment. As you can see, the inconsistent implementation makes analysis and report of student needs difficult and not reliable as it is not a full measure across the district. This does not mean that teachers are not assessing their students using other formative assessment measures, but it does mean that as a district, we are only able to see student progress on a summative assessment cycle that is shared in our prior slide is really a measure of student learning, not for student learning. In math, we have similar data with 27% of our students meeting grade-level standard in math, also representing a 2% drop in average student scores across the district from the prior year. Again, we are sharing participation rates to demonstrate the varied implementation and use of these formative assessments. So you see 68% in IREDDI math in 1 through 6, 48% in a middle-of-year diagnostic, and then in the district common interim assessments for grades 7 through 12, you see that we have 25% in beginning of year, 11% in the middle of the year. Oh, which slide is this? Where is it going? Of grave, I'm sorry, I'm moving my papers around and losing where we are. Of grave importance to us in the Academic Office, and I know to the board as well, is the continued disproportionate outcomes we see for our students of color, our socio-economically disadvantaged students, our emergent bilingual students, our foster and homeless youth, and our students with disabilities. On this slide, you see a side-by-side comparison of our annual summative assessments of each student group and their performance level as determined by the California School Dashboard. In the next slide in your packet, you have a reference for what the colors mean, but in summary, you can see that nearly all of our student groups, English learners, foster youth, African-American, American Indian, Asian, Hispanic, homeless, Pacific Islander, Filipino, and... and socio-economically disadvantaged students are performing lower and making less progress than their white counterparts, particularly in the area of reading. And in math, we are seeing declines or limited growth across the board. Of significance always, and especially this evening as we honor Black History Month, it's important to note that our Black African-American students are in the orange in both reading and math, meaning they are both experiencing low academic success and decline in performance. And in our formative assessment data, we see similar trends with our historically marginalized student groups continuing to underperform their white counterparts. And when we look at the overall placement of our students, you see that nearly 80% of them do not begin the year grade-level ready. In an effective instructional model, we would see that 80% or more of our students are grade-level ready as opposed to not grade-level ready. And again, you see the same in math. This data does not show the full picture, but it does point to an urgent and constantly growing need for us to center the learning of our most at-risk students. This means providing them with explicit literacy and foundational math instruction as a tier-one practice in all classrooms, combined with anti-bias, anti-racist learning for our adults so they can both create the learning conditions that turn on those thinking and learning brains to receive, engage in, and make lasting and meaningful learning the norm. This combination of instruction and learning conditions is what is needed for our most at-risk students to succeed in our schools. So with that, I will share with you what we have on the horizon for you to consider as you are thinking about future priorities and investments. So coming up, state-mandated reading screening. Last summer, Governor Newsom signed legislation requiring LEAs to screen students, all of them, for reading delays, including but not limited to dyslexia. The state board is currently appointing a panel to create a list of approved screeners for this purpose. And by June of 2025, each ELA, ours included, must adopt and administer a state-adopted instrument. This means that in short order, as soon as the state-approved list is available, we will need to reach agreement on an annual screener to be administered to all K-2 students to identify reading delays and needs by the 24, 25 school year. Also on the horizon is a need to ensure that formative assessments are available to all students and that district-wide professional learning is available to all educators around how to use those formative assessments. Remember, those are assessments for learning to identify and understand student needs, develop learning activities to address those needs, and provide interventions that are matched to those needs. It's of great importance for the board to also consider how and what our district invests in professional learning. In order for our educators to center and improve the learning of our most at-risk students, we must equip them with the knowledge, skills, tools, and support they need to provide explicit literacy and a foundational math instruction as a tier-one practice in all schools alongside anti-bias, anti-racist practices so they can create the conditions for true learning to take place. Specifically, we urgently need to support our educators with professional learning in the science of reading, building fact fluency and adolescent literacy and math skills across all content areas. Our educators, even the newest among our ranks, do not necessarily arrive to their classrooms equipped to teach explicit literacy and foundational math skills in elementary or through content in secondary. Many of them have not had explicit training in anti-bias, anti-racist, trauma-informed practices. This is not an educator deficit. It is more accurately a gap in how educators are prepared for the field, especially given the systemic racism, oppression, and post-pandemic disparities of an urban school district such as ours. Providing consistent, relevant, ongoing professional learning to ensure our educators are equipped for the critical role they play in educating each and every child under our care is our responsibility. As you have come to know as a board already in these last two years, we are almost always in the process of piloting, adopting, or implementing updated instructional materials. This year, we implemented new history, social studies curriculum. Right now, we are piloting world language instructional materials and are preparing to bring our recommendations to you for new adoptions to be implemented next year. Our California State Board adopted a new mathematics framework last summer and will release approved instructional materials this fall, which means we will soon be launching a math adoption committee to screen and pilot materials with the aim of implementing new math materials no later than the 27, 28 school year. English Language Arts will follow a similar course in the coming years as well. Instructional materials adoptions must be considered as an ongoing district expense and not viewed as one-time purchases, but rather a necessary recurring investment in providing high-quality, culturally-responsive instructional materials and professional learning for our students and educators. Culturally responsive leadership and instruction. We are continuing to build, to focus on building the capacity of all leaders and educators in culturally-responsive leadership and instruction. From our board and cabinet to our IASs and central office leadership to site leaders, we are working to develop our capacity to serve our system as anti-bias, anti-racist, trauma-informed leaders. Currently, this work is centered on how we better support and prepare our adults for work in the field, and it must be expanded to include our staff who provide direct support and service to our students and families. In closing, I'll invite each of you to think about a time when learning was easy and fun for you. And conversely, when a time when learning was difficult and not fun and disengaging. And think about what's the difference there? What made it easy? What made it engaging? What made it difficult? What made it disengaging? For our team and many others who are engaged deeply in this work of disrupting inequities in our system, we will recall that we learned best in classrooms and spaces where we felt like we belonged, where we had authentic relationships with our peers and teachers, where instruction reflected our identities, where our brains were turned on for learning, and where our teachers were confident and calm in their delivery and feedback. It is this kind of learning environment combined with high-quality instruction that we are striving to provide to all of our students. And in our pursuit of disrupting inequities, particularly in literacy and math, we need to remember that creating inclusive, identity-affirming, and engaging learning environments coupled with high-quality instruction is paramount for ensuring all students thrive and succeed in our schools. And with that, I will invite Dr. Pella. Oh, it's public comment time. But I will, after that, invite Dr. Pella up to help answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Public comment.
We do not have any public comment.
I see none. Ms. Pella is going to continue? There's a separate presentation for Ms. Pella? Or you're just here to answer questions?
We're just here to answer any questions that you have.
So really, no questions? Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome. President Rhodes, good job. Okay. Moving on. Item 9.3. Presentation of General Obligation Bond Voter Survey. Ms. Marking and Mr. Scott. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, President Phillips, members of the board, and Superintendent Allen. Tonight, we present item 9.3, a presentation on recent voter, on a recent voter survey regarding a possible bond measure on the November 2024 ballot. As you recall, Mr. Dale Scott visited you all in June 2023 with an initial conversation, and he returns this evening to provide this data to you. We are not seeking any action on this item tonight. And with that, I welcome Mr. Dale Scott, the district's financial advisor, to the podium. Thank you for joining us, Dale. Here's the clicker.
Thank you. Good evening. Janaye stole most of my introduction, so I will dive wide in. And I'm going to keep it, I'm going to show you a number of slides, but I'm going to keep it short and balanced from slide, not to take every slide because there's a lot of data here in the information, but a lot of good information. Just to remind you, last year, I came before the board. I said we thought there was an opportunity by which you could go back to the voters, ask them for roughly $500 million of authorization, and it would not increase their tax rate. And I was told, yes, go out and survey voters and come back to us and tell us how that works. It sounds like a great idea, and let's see what they say. So if I can get the presentation up, do I just press a button and it comes? Ta-da. Okay, good. I'm going to go to slide five, if I can. Slide five shows the background on this survey itself. The survey methodology was we talk only to registered voters in the school district. You have to be a registered voter. And then the first question is, do you plan on voting in the upcoming presidential election? And if the person says, no, I don't, then they're banked and let go because we only want to talk to people that are going to vote, to find out how they feel. There were 400 completed surveys. That is actually a fairly robust survey for a group this, a community this size. Most of it was done either by text to web or through calls of landlines or calls to cell phones. And you can see at the bottom, there was a margin of error of 4.8%. What that means is, when you look at that number and you say, well, that's a great number, but then you've got to say, well, it could be, you know, 4% or 5% either way. So it gives you kind of a sense of where that number is. The way the survey works is there's a, once the person is on the phone or taking the survey, they're asked a few warm-up questions to make sure that they don't think someone is trying to get their PIN number or something. And then they give them, they just read them what they, what we believe the ballot language would look like when they go to vote. But before that, I'm sorry, after that, there were a couple of demographic questions. I'm going to give a couple of those upfront because I think they're interesting. The first is, we ask the voters, remember, we're talking to voters. We ask them, do you now have or have you ever had children or grandchildren who attended or now, or are now attending school in the Sacramento City Unified? Look at that number, 61%. 61%. I always think this is a fascinating slide because as board members, you may, many board members think of their constituents as parents because those are the people that come and talk to you and complain and et cetera, et cetera. But 61% of the voters surveyed have never had children or grandchildren attend the schools. You could take that two ways, of course. You could think, wow, that's a huge number. Or you could say, gee, there's a lot of people that are either moving into our district because they have young children, they are going to go to school, or they have moved here after their children have been raised someplace else. But the point is, many of the people, over half, who are voters in this district really have no real connection to this district in terms of, except for what they hear at the supermarket or church or read in the newspaper or whatever. So just keep that in mind as we go through this. However, they have opinions. We ask them, and I'm on slide six. I'm sorry, I'm on slide, back up here. I'm on slide seven. Do you or disagree? Sacramento Public Schools are our community's most important asset and our number-one priority. 76% say yes, which is amazing when you think about it. Is there any real issue that 76% of your voters agree on? But they agree that this is the top priority. And then we ask, do you agree or disagree? Quality schools increase property values. So even though 60-plus% of your voters don't have children in the schools, have never had children in the schools, they've figured out that good schools mean a lot to the property values of their own homes. So keep that in mind. Okay, so as I said, once the, these warm-up questions are over, we ask them the question. Now, I'm not going to read the entire ballot language. It's long, it's torturous, it's filled with a lot of legal requirements. But basically, it's asking voters, you can see at the beginning, with funds that cannot be taken by the state and spent elsewhere and with no increase in current tax rates. And then it goes through some of the projects that would be funded, and it tells them what the cost would be. And then it asks, you know, the person asks, would you be in favor? Or would you vote yes or vote no on this measure? If the person says, I don't know, they're prompted again and say, well, would that be a lean yes or a lean no? And that you can see in that table, I'm sorry, in the pie chart, that when you add the lean yes and the yes, you have 65% yes. It requires 55% to pass a bond in California. So you're off to a great start without any information, just reading them. This is like the person who just walks in the booth and reads it at the first. Of course, we don't walk in booths anymore, but, you know, walks in the proverbial booth and says, I don't know anything about this, but I'm going to read this. How do I vote? I know none of you have ever done that, but voters do vote that way sometimes. So then, what we do after that is we begin to give them a number of projects. The funds would be used for such-and-such project. Would this make you more likely or less likely? Now, those questions, which run about 20-plus, those are randomized, so nobody gets, you know, you don't have that tiring effect. But I've put them in the order where they are the highest ranked at the top. And we won't go through all of them. I'm just going to show you what some of those top projects are. So for example, at the top, if you knew that the funds would be used to expand steam classrooms and labs, would you be more likely or less likely to vote for the measure? And almost 80% of the voters say, yes, I would be more likely. Repair and replace roofs, expand counseling and special education facilities, ensure accessibility for disabled. All of these are well over the 55% mark. So this isn't saying these are the projects you should do. What this is saying is these are the projects that resonate with voters, that they understand, okay, I'm for it when I find out that that's what it's going to be used for. They don't all work out that well. Let's go to slide 15. Construct pool facilities for five comprehensive high schools. Well, not so good. 40% say that they would be more. Expand cafeteria and dining areas, 43%. So they don't all work quite as well, but most of them do. Next, we ask voters, after we finish the project list, we ask voters questions, which I call attitudinal questions. They're not projects, but they're information about how the bond monies are spent. So if you look at page 17, and again, these are randomized when they're asked, but they're put in the order now so you can see what comes to the top. No surprise, if you ask voters, if you knew that these funds cannot be taken by the state and spent elsewhere, you have almost 80% of the voters say I'd be more likely to vote for it in that case. If you knew that there would be full public disclosure of all spending, close to 75%. All, these are the four questions they ask all are over 5, all are over 55%. We then ask them some questions about tax rate sensitivity. Now, remember, we're telling them that it's not going to increase their current tax rate, but there is going to be a tax rate involved because it's not going to fall. It's going to be the tax rate that they now pay. We also ask them, in this case, the question without the fact that the tax rate would stay the same. And you can see the impact. One was $59 per $100,000 of assessed valuation. One was $59 per $100,000 of assessed valuation. One was, stated differently, six cents per $100 of assessed valuation, same number, by the way. The two at the top tell them it's not going to increase their taxes, the two at the bottom don't mention that. But the funny, fascinating thing here is, there's not much difference. There's not much difference. Why? Because they support the measure. I mean, they support the school, and you can see that from the very beginning of the survey. They have strong support feeling, and they understand that it's not gonna raise their taxes. They like that, but they like the projects more. So once we get through all of the questions, once we've told them the tax rate, once we've described some of the attitudinal questions, then we come back to that original bond measure question and basically ask them, do you want to change your vote? We're on now page 21, now that you've heard more information, and they read them the measure again, and you can see what happens, and it's really quite remarkable. We've gone from 65% and now up to 74%, either yes or lean yes. And the no is the no, frankly. The no has not changed. So where do you go from here? To place this measure on the ballot, if that's the desire of the board, there would be a resolution brought back to the board for action. It has to be passed sometime between now and, let's say, June or July to get on the county's rolls. That vote requires a two-thirds majority of the board, meaning five out of seven votes have to pass it. And at that point, it would appear on the ballot of the presidential election in November. And with that, I will end and ask if there are any questions and look for direction.
Is there any public comment on that?
We do have one speaker, Mo Kashmiri.
Mr. Kashmiri, mic is yours.
Hello, Mo Kashmiri. I wanted to thank the gentleman, I think he did a great job on this survey, and I think it shows that voters support our schools and want to support our schools. We know that we have $2.5 billion worth of needs. We're an old district, you know, we're the legacy district in this area, and our schools are older than our surroundings, our competitors. And so they're in dire need of repair, so we definitely need this $500 million. You know, however, and I would ask this board to, you know, try to push further. If we have $2.5 billion of needs and we're pushing for a bond of $500 million, it still leaves way too much need in this district. And that means that what we'll end up doing is, we'll end up improving a few schools, but leaving the large majority as they are. And that's not good enough. I think we should be, you know, trying to see if we can look, push for a bigger bond, even if it means that it's a tax increase. From what the study, you know, what his study is showing is that when we show, tell people that it increases their property values, they generally understand that it, you know, quality schools mean a better community. So I would ask this board to push back and see, to try to see if we can go further than just the $500 million, although I fully understand why it was picked because obviously it's easier to pass if we can say it's not raising taxes. But I think we could get the community to agree that we do need to raise taxes to really fully fund our schools, to make them the schools that our kids really deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No more speakers.
Thanks. Board discussion? Any questions? Okay. Ms. Jean?
So this is currently, this would be extending a current bond. This isn't necessarily new monies, it's continuing monies.
It is, it is extending a tax rate. It's new bonds, but extending the tax rate.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. And at this moment, the state is not offering any matching school bonds, yes? To my knowledge, that is not on the table.
I do not believe there's any money of currently available. There's talk of getting on the ballot with a state bond in November.
Okay.
This would allow you to match those, if it passes.
Thank you. Those were my two questions.
Thank you, Ms. Jean. Mr. Singh?
My question's pretty simple. Do we expect any opposition? So when I think about measures, we always have groups that are opposing and supporting. And I'm not looking back into the history of these things, but has a bond measure for our schools been opposed in the past? And has there been a group that specifically opposes it? For me, I'm thinking more about what we need to do to encourage our community if we were to agree. I feel like there's still homework for us to do and for efforts for us to put in as board members, or at least I can speak for myself, that I would put in the effort if we agreed to this in the future, to actually go out and educate folks. Because as you showcased in the slides, you're saying the same thing, but by the time you get to some language that does, that says the word increase, you're starting to lose steam, you're starting to lose people. So I really just wanna know, do you think there's opposition? And has there been opposition to passing school-focused bond measures in Sacramento?
I am unaware of any organized opposition in the past. I do wanna point out one thing, and that is, I left it out of this, this deck, I believe I talked about it last time. The presidential election is really an important date for a school bond. It's something not to be missed. So if we look back at the last 20 years of data for school elections, they can be on gubernatorial elections, they can be on primaries, they can be on presidential elections. Well, if you divide those up and you start looking at them individually, the success rate of school bonds in presidential elections is much higher than any of the other. It's statewide, it's close to 90%, perhaps over 90%. Then you get to gubernatorial, it drops down to about 80. You get to all the other elections, it drops down to about 65. Why? It's turnout. It's voter turnout. It's that simple. Kind of comes back to your question about opposition. If fewer people vote, then it's easier to move the needle in opposition, right? They only have to get 45% no, and it's 45% of a smaller group. So you really want to be on that major ballot, on that presidential ballot, where, yes, there might be opposition, but it's a much tougher road for them to, to make any real impact on it, in my experience.
Mr. Kayata?
So thank you for doing this work. This is exactly what we asked for, and it is very instructive. You know, Measure H passed with 62% of the vote, and I'm seeing similar polling results. I would say we could probably do better because when Measure H was out there, we didn't have big shiny projects to kind of show that we were good at spending the bond money. Between then and now, we have, we're building new schools. We've dramatically improved a lot of our schools all over the city. And we've also shown our community that, you know, we know how to invest on an equity basis where the improvements are the most needed to help the kids who need the most work. And I think our community has responded to that. And I think that this is the type of bond campaign, speaking to my colleagues, that I think would be successful. You know, there's a lot that goes into educating our kids and making them feel comfortable learning and excelling and growing as people. But the physical facility that you learn in, it shows how much your community values you. This polling result is showing that the community does value this. And as a board member, as a parent, you know, I want my kids learning in an environment that's beautiful and amazing and really an experience to learn. We have needs. We have, as Mr. Kashmiri said, billions of dollars of needs. This is just a chip of it, but it's an investment in our students. I know we don't have action here today, but I'd just like to share with my colleagues, I think we should definitely move forward with this. I think our kids need it, and I think our community is with us to support our kids in this. And again, thank you for the work you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rhodes?
Thank you for this. This is, this is great. Question I have, you said that in a presidential election year, you know, the opportunity to pass something like this is high. You think it's only around 90%. So anecdotally, how do you think we would fare if we were to try to go for something higher, like Mo said? I think that way that, the way that I hear you framing it, sounds like there's a huge opportunity, and we're taking low-hanging fruit. But is there, is, do you think there's a larger opportunity to invest more broadly in our schools and students giving the presidential year?
I do, I do, with two, with two comments to keep in mind. One is, my opinion isn't worth much. I mean, I have an opinion, I've seen a lot of bond issues, but I think if you really wanted to drill down on that, it might be worth doing a mini survey, nothing quite this extensive, and just ask those questions, those kinds of questions at that higher rate. My bet, and you saw it in the data, is there's not much movement in those numbers. Number two is, there's only so much that a school district can digest at a time. You can get $3 billion worth of authority to issue bonds, but you still have to spend that money, and you still have to, you have people to go out and do the work, and there's only so much money that can be spent in one year. So if you're really interested in that, answering that question, you should be looking to your CBO. How much money can we spend in a year? What's our real ability to spend? And you might find it's, you know, it's more than this, I don't know. But that might be a good place to start if the board is indeed interested in, well, what should we be looking for? I said two, but I'll say three. Three is, it's not, it's not uncommon for school districts to go back for multiple bonds. Four years from now, six years from now, when you're done with this and you still have funds from the other bonds, when those are expended, then you go back to the voters and say, okay, you know, we're back for the next one. That's very common for districts your size.
Yeah, I think, I think that Sacramento Unified School District, especially this year, stars have aligned. This is the first time in a long time where we are, our budget is in good condition. First time in a long time that we would most likely have support from our labor partners to help get the messages out because of relationships building and the changes. First time in a long time that we've invested in our district in multitudes of ways where people can visibly see it and feel it. And I, and I think like this year, if not any other year, would make sense to actually do more. But obviously, that's a conversation for myself and my colleagues later on to see what we want to do collectively. But I'm totally in support of bare minimum doing this, but swinging for the fence a little bit as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other input? Mr. Singh?
I can see the screen from this side. So I'm listening to what Taylor and Chen were saying. So I, I think we should have that conversation. This is a place to have that conversation, at least to get, what I'm hearing is, if we wanna have that discussion about a mini survey, if we wanna have that information from our team, then we need to, as a group, at least give some sort of direction to actually get that rolling because it sounds like we don't have a very long timeline. If I'm looking at this May or June board action, then all these conversations would require us to actually move pretty quickly. So I guess I'm asking Ann, how do we have a discussion where we can actually say, hey, that's what we wanna do? Like, can we just do that up here? Can we say we wanna put our, our team to get us some information? And then how do we go about saying, if we agree to doing another survey, whether it's a mini survey?
I think you can have that discussion. You can't take action because this is an information item, but through the discussion, staff and your consultant can take next steps that are appropriate.
Thank you. Well, in that sense, I would agree. I would agree with us getting more information. I would love to hear what it would look like to have a mini survey go out and see what it looks like to push those numbers a bit and what people would say. And then also actually get the information from our team to see what, how much can we actually spend before we go out and throw out a number? That's what I would like to see.
Thank you. Were you up, Mr. Rhodes?
No.
Mr. Kayata?
So to my previous two colleagues, I would definitely be in support of trying to see if we can go bigger. We're also in the admirable position of having an amazing equity index already in place where we already essentially have identified more than $500 million of needs. It's already described. So I would certainly be interested in, you know, kind of a mini survey, seeing what voters would support. But I think, like I said before, our city is ready to invest in our school facilities, and our kids certainly need it.
Thanks. Ms. Jean?
I have two main thoughts. One, as we gather more information, if we're gonna do another mini survey, I'd love for it to be a little more connected in tangible what our goals might be in that bond, if that is appropriate, and not necessarily indicate to the community that we are promising that, right? But I do know that, we know, I would ask our current team with the Equity Index Survey to bring them back to us, like, I know we've gotten presentations on the asks and on the plans and on the timeline of those things, and just going, if the bond passes as it currently is, meaning no tax increase, what would it look like? And if we were to go to a certain amount, what would it look like? And if we were to go to a certain amount, what would it look like? And with that information, looking at where is the community if we make things a bit more tangible, a bit more guided, and where is our staff capacity at taking this on as well? Yes? I mean, these are, there's a lot of moving parts to this. And so while we do need to move quickly, I don't want us to move erroneously because the last thought in my head is, if this were to, we were to get very eager and then not pass, that crushes problematically moving forward, where we appear to currently have a very steady supportive stream of how we have been doing things. But I also know our community, I believe our community is eager for change and eager for improvements. And so depending on how we message that, we could say part of changing and improving means more resources are needed. So, yes, specifics on the Equity Index, specifics on our, our staff capacity and recommendations, and ensuring that we're not, that we're being diligent and, and smart about where we're going to ensure that it would most likely pass. And then looking at the work that might be required of those of us in the community if we're going to take a bigger bite at the apple.
Thank you. I appreciate the conversations that we had here. That was fantastic. I like to see that. Let's see more. So that was an information item. I have to thank my colleagues for sharing. And also, Mr. Scott, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Markin, you have some more to share? Oh, no, you're the other half. Back to my desk.
Yes, I am the next item, and wishing Dale well on his journey home. Good evening again, President Phillips, members of the board, and Superintendent Allen. Item 10.1 is another informational presentation to provide you an update on the recent governor's January budget proposal for the upcoming annual budget adoption in June. We welcome Leilani Agnaldo, Director of Governmental Relations at our partner, School Services of California, to provide a high-level overview of the proposal. I will offer a few notes regarding local impact of the proposal near the end. Thank you for joining us, Leilani. We're so happy to have you here with us. And here is the clicker. I turn it over to you.
Thanks, Chaney. Hello, good evening. I was gonna say good morning, but obviously that's not the case. So good evening. Thank you, board members, Superintendent Allen, thank you for the invitation to be back here to, at the school district. So happy to be invited back and give this overview of what the governor has proposed for the 2425 state budget. So before I get started with the slide, as a reminder, right, you've heard this spiel before, we are at the very beginning of the state budget process. So by law, the governor is required to unveil his budget proposal for the budget year by January 10, and that's what we'll be going over today. And over the next few months, the legislature then will have a chance through their budget hearings to really dig in and give their opinions and consider all of the different proposals that are included in the governor's budget proposal for 2425. And then again, by law, the governor is required to do what they call a May revision to the budget. That is required to be done by mid-May, and the reason for that is because at that point, we'll have updated revenue numbers, et cetera, from the state. And so the governor will update his budget proposal for 2425 in May. And then hopefully, you know, the legislature and the governor will be able to come to an agreement on a final budget, and hopefully that will be in place by the start of the 2425 school years, or fiscal year, excuse me. So we expect that the final budget would be enacted before July 1. So backing up first, as a reminder again, by law, a portion of the state's total general fund revenues is required to go towards TK through 14 public education. It's about 38% that goes towards public schools, and that's what we refer to as the Proposition 98 Minimum Guarantee. And so for the purpose of today, our focus is primarily, almost exclusively, well, it is actually for today, focused on the proposition, what we refer to as the Proposition 98 side of the budget. And so the, the framing that the governor has given for his budget proposal for 2425 is that the state is in a period of correction and normalization, right? What he's saying is that the unexpected revenues that the state experienced for the last few years, specifically from 1920 through 21, 21 through 22, which also translated into historic increases in the Proposition 98 Minimum Guarantee, that those were the anomalous years, right? And from the governor's perspective, what he's proposing, what we're seeing for 2425, is this return to normal, right? This is the period of, it's the economy correcting itself. And so the good news is, with the last few years of significant increases in the Proposition 98 Minimum Guarantee, there were large investments that were made for schools in addition to large amounts of money that were put into state reserves, in particular, a Proposition 98 rainy day fund specifically for schools. On the flip side of that, the bad news is, in 2223 specifically, there was a huge shortfall in what they estimated for tax revenues for 2223. It was a $26 billion shortfall, and the primary reason for that is because at the time that they were building the budget last summer for the 20- they were building the budget last summer for the 2324 budget, at that time, normally, they would have the actual revenues for that year, for 2223. But because of the delay in the income tax filing deadlines, when they were building the budget a year ago or last summer, they were still relying on estimates, right? Whereas normally, they would have had the actual revenues for 2223. And so all of those estimates, we know now, now that 2223 is behind us, they were off by about $26 billion. And we'll go into that again in more detail for the impact to schools in another slide here. Despite the significant underperformance of revenues in 2223, at this time, and his budget proposal for 2425, the governor is not proposing any new cuts or deferrals to the K-12 side of the budget. The bad news, though, however, is that the education is facing a COLA-only year for 2425. And as you all know by now, I'm sure, the projected COLA for 2425 is significantly less than the COLA that was included in the enacted budget for the current year for 2324. Okay, so here are the updated Proposition 98 Minimum Guarantee levels for 2223 and 2324. So on the left side of the chart, so on the left side of the chart, these are the numbers specifically for the 2223 fiscal year. So what you, the far-left bar is the actual, those are the revenues that were included in the 2324 enacted budget. And so at the time of the enacted budget, what they had set as the minimum guarantee for Proposition 98 was $107 billion, a little bit more than $107 billion. But with the governor's budget proposal for 2425, he's had to revise that estimate down to $98.3 billion. That's the new updated Minimum Guarantee for 2223. And so that's why it's a shortfall of $9.1 billion specifically just for 2223 alone. So earlier, I mentioned that in 2223, it was a $26 billion shortfall. So in good times, because of the Proposition 98 Minimum Guarantee that, where it's about 38% of state revenues that goes towards education, if there are unexpected revenues, then we benefit, right? Because automatically, 38% of that goes towards schools. But on the flip side of that, if there's a shortfall, then that is what we are translating into that $9 billion shortfall then in the Proposition 98 Minimum Guarantee for 2223. On the right side, the two bars there on the right side are for the 2324 fiscal year, so the current fiscal year. So those Minimum Guarantee levels have also dropped. And so that $108.3 billion, that is what was included in the enacted budget for 2324. And so with the governor's January budget proposal, he's ratcheting that down to $105.5 billion roughly for the current year. So earlier, I mentioned that there is a historic Proposition 98 reserve. So that is something that the governor is planning to tap into. So on the left there, the table, you'll see what the updated deposits are for the Proposition 98 Rainy Day Fund. So in the 2324 enacted budget, there were required deposits proposed for 2223 and 2324. And because of the change in revenues for the 2425 governor's budget, you see those deposits into the rainy day fund are significantly lower. In addition, the governor is proposing withdrawals, and these would be discretionary withdrawals. And so you see that reflected in 2324. It's a little bit more than $3 billion that the governor is planning to withdraw from the reserve, and then a little bit more than $2.6 billion for 2425. And in the next slide, I'll show exactly where those funds are proposed to go. And then on the right, the bar graph there, what those numbers are showing are the revised estimates for what the balance would be of the rainy day fund with the budget proposal. So at the end of 2425, the governor is leaving a balance of more than $3.8 billion in the rainy day fund. So that if, if the economy continues the way that it is, the governor wants to leave a little bit of money there in the rainy day fund so that we can tap into that in the future years as needed. Okay, those withdrawals from the rainy day fund. The governor is proposing to put the bulk of that into sustaining the local control funding formula. So you may recall that in the enacted budget, the governor was already relying on one-time funds to afford the COLA primarily in 2324 for the LCFF. So it was $1.6 billion of one-time funds that was included in the current year enacted budget that went towards LCFF. On top of that, because of the reduction in the Proposition 98 Minimum Guarantee, the governor is needing to tap into the rainy day fund and $2.8 billion of that in 2324 is going towards keeping LCFF whole. And then in 2425, he's relying on an additional $2.2 billion of one-time funds in order to keep LCFF whole and keep districts funded at that level. That's proposed with the statutory COLA. So here, these numbers should not be a surprise to you at this time, right? A huge decrease in the statutory COLA for 2425 and the out years. So just as a reminder, the statutory COLA for California is determined at the federal level. So it's not an arbitrary number that the governor decides per statute. It's decided at the federal level. And so unfortunately, what this means for 2425 is that it is a significant reduction to 0.76% as the proposed statutory COLA, or I should say, the projected statutory COLA for 2425. So in the chart on the bottom, that top line, January 2024, those are the updated COLAs that the governor has proposed, or has projected, I should say. And then June 2023, those were the COLAs that were projected at that time, included in the enacted budget. And then, of course, the last row then is what that difference is, the delta between what we have in January as the proposed COLAs and then between that and what was proposed back in June. Okay, this chart shows for a hypothetical district, what is the impact of the significant drop in COLA then for 2425? So in green here for this hypothetical district, this is a district that has an ADA of $10,000 in 2324. This district hypothetically is experiencing declining enrollment. They have a declining enrollment projected of about 2% each year. And so that's why you see the ADA dropping from $10,000 to $9,824.25, and then to a little more than $9,625.26. The green numbers would be what this hypothetical district would have proposed as included in their first interim, right? So with a 3.94% COLA during first interim in 2425, this district was projected to increase their LCFF by about $2.5 million relative to the current year. But then now, because of the adjustment in the COLA to 0.76%, the point of this chart is to show, all else being equal, in first interim and second interim, the only thing that's changing in this scenario is COLA. And so it's providing an example of that for this district, their LCFF between first interim and second interim for 2425, it would be a difference of more than $3 million, or yeah, of more than $3 million. And then not only that, but for this district, they would actually be receiving less in LCFF funds in 2425 relative to what they really received in 2324. What's not in the budget? So despite the significant drop in the Minimum Guarantee over the last, from dating to 2223, and the updated numbers that are included in the budget proposal, the governor does not include any cuts in the overall Proposition 98 funding, no cuts to programs that schools have been, have gotten used to over the last few years, no mention of deferrals at this time, and then in addition, no sweeps of any unallocated competitive grants at this time, such as the Community Schools Partnership Program. However, there are significant risks that are included in the governor's budget proposal. One of those is the general fund condition, right? Because of that tie through Proposition 98 between general fund revenues and the money that goes to schools, any volatility that's experienced at the state level, at the federal level, automatically translates to changes and it affects the Proposition 98 Minimum Guarantee for schools. At this time, the COLA of 0.76%, that's just a projection. We're expecting the last two data points. In order to finalize that COLA, we'll have that by the May revision. We are projecting that that'll tick up a little bit. It'll be closer to 1%, which, you know, that's better than it dropping or anything like that. But the concern is any increase in the COLA, that will only further exacerbate the budget deficit that they have to solve for. And then the other thing that we're worried about is these budget assumptions, right? That the governor has included in his proposal any changes at all in the revenues that come in. If they're lower than expected, then that will only lead to a drop in the Minimum Guarantee as well. And so far, what we're already seeing is that in January, what is, the way the revenues are turning is we're already seeing what we think is about a $6 billion shortfall in year-to-date. That's compared to the governor's updated numbers that were included in the budget proposal. But again, we're just at the beginning of the process. The next time the budget will be updated is in May, and in the meantime, we'll be responding and listening to what the legislature has to say about the governor's budget proposal.
Thank you so much, Leilani. So just for the local context, as presented, the 2425 state budget proposal does include that change to COLA, reducing the previous estimate from 3.94%, which is what we've been operating off of, down to an estimated 0.76%. We are all optimistic that it might raise up a little closer to 1%. That would be great. We are tracking it, of course, and will be anxious to see what comes out in May. This reduction right now, the proposed drop to 0.76%, just so that you all know the numbers, it equates roughly to a projected decrease in our LCFF funding of approximately $15.3 million. And of course, that is then ongoing because the COLA affects all ongoing years. The proposal, this January proposal from the governor is now updated on the School Services DART Board, which is what we use for our COLA estimates. So that will inform our projections for second interim, and the board and community should be prepared to see that data as it will be presented at the March 7th Board Meeting. Again, it's important to note that right now, we're very much working with estimates. We will continue to track the conversation, the updates that are coming in May and then in June, and we'll continue to update the board on those changes as they occur. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Any public comment?
We do have one speaker signed up, Mo Kashmiri.
Mr. Kashmiri.
Just briefly, I do want to acknowledge that the school budget looking upcoming doesn't look great, although I will say that the economy has rebounded and the stock market is at record highs. So I'm hoping that things will get better, not worse, moving forward. But I still urge the board to do more than what we're doing. What we've seen is our numbers need a lot of work. We have a lot of need in this district. I would urge this board to, just like you did a minute ago, you know, recently around the bond about pushing for more, I think we should be asking our staff to look into things like doing potential, you know, doing surveys and trying to figure out a poll of whether we could pass revenue measures. We have a unique opportunity that hasn't existed before, where we can pass revenue measures with 50% if they're done through the city, through, in partnership with the city or the county, and through a ballot initiative. And so, and that through that, we can actually do taxes in a much, we don't have to just rely on parcel taxes and school bonds like we do now. That opens up a whole new area where we could do vacancy taxes, we could do soda taxes, we could do all kinds of things. And I would urge this board to ask, to direct your staff to work with the community on trying to see if there's ways we can get more revenue so that if the budget doesn't look great, we're not in a spot where we're cutting services. Because, you know, even staying status quo isn't enough for our district. We need to be adding more and more services for the kids that, you know, need the help. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Caetano.
So thank you very much for the presentation. I think this is now like the fifth presentation I've watched on this one, in addition to watching the governor himself and many other people talk about this. So thankful you didn't have different information. So when we're looking at our second interim, there's, which we have to deal with every year, but the elephant in the room is this is the governor's proposal, and we don't really know where the legislature is going to come out. I would say kind of my personal take on kind of following this over the past several weeks is, or gosh, when did this come out? Maybe it has been several weeks. The governor really kind of did not touch education. Minimal impacts compared to some other programs that were kind of, you know, taking a little bit of a hit. And again, maybe you don't know this because I don't really know if there's been any consensus on this, but do we have a sense of where the legislature is? You know, if we have a second interim and it turns out that the legislature's proposals are dramatically different and the May revise is like a complete, you know, 90 degrees away from this, how comfortable do we feel like this is going to be our budget?
The revenue estimates, so the only other counterpoint that we really have is like, okay, figuring out how much money are they going to have to work with, right? Within the Proposition 98 Minimum Guarantee. And the governor's numbers for the Minimum Guarantee are a little bit more conservative. Excuse me, the LAO's numbers are a little bit more conservative, right? So the LAO is the Legislative Analyst Office, so they provide their own estimates as well for the economy. And so those numbers are a little bit more conservative than what the governor has proposed, but they're not off by too much. And so that doesn't really leave a lot of room for, you know, any funds for new investments or anything like that. So, and then also with revenues, if they come in less, then they'll have to figure out, you know, are we going to have to draw more from the reserves, et cetera? So I think that's probably one of the biggest points of, or one of the greatest areas potentially for negotiations is how much do we leave in the rainy day fund, right? Because as I showed on one of those slides, the governor proposes to leave a balance of about $3.8 billion. So the legislature could decide that they want to leave more in the reserve or less in the reserve. So that gives them a little bit of wiggle room. But they also need to leave themselves room in case, you know, revenues continue to come in underestimates. And then, of course, if the revenues come in more than estimated, then that'll bring in more money that they can work with as well.
Okay, that's my only question. Thank you. And I, well, actually, I do have one little question. So when is the next time we are going to be getting an update? Is it going to be at the second interim or are we going to have another update?
Second interim will be the next update at the March 7th Board Meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jean?
So you totally already answered my first question, which is, what is that difference in COLA in terms of numbers for us? So thank you for giving us that it's looking at $15.3 million right now. And I just, I want to make it very clear that that is not a cut, that is a reshifting of projected numbers that we were playing around with. And then I'm looking at our first interim. We're not really in declining enrollment, right? Our UPP is down a little bit and our enrollment, it's fair, like, we're not in a space where we're losing students. So it's really more, like, that's not an additional hit we have to consider, is it? And I know we need to wait for the next round in April, but...
Our trend is that technically, enrollment is declining. It's not significant staggering decline every year. I know that Rhonda knows the data very well, but I believe it's approximately around 500 to 600 students.
Okay.
We could get you better data on that. I'm still memorizing all of these numbers.
Well, and I know the second interim will have it.
The second interim will absolutely be updated.
Yeah, so you don't need to rush that. It was more just in the, in context of this, thinking the other hits to our budget would be if we're losing students like your example showed, and our UPP going down, because that's definitely going to impact the supplemental and concentration monies. So thank you for the presentation and getting us all this info.
Thank you. That was an information item. Thank you, Ms. Agnaldo and Ms. Marking.
Thank you so very much. Thank you, Leilani.
Next up, communications. Did a public comment ask before that? I feel like that doesn't, I do that every time. I'm sorry. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Phillips. Today is the first day of Black History Month, and I would like to start my remarks tonight by celebrating our future. This year's Black Parent Involvement Day is going to be held on Tuesday, February 20. Black Parent Involvement Day is an opportunity for all families to visit their student's school, meet their teachers, and send a strong message to your student that you want them to succeed academically. This important event is organized by the Black Parallel School Board, and they are hosting a virtual parent training for this event on Thursday, February 15 at 6:00 p.m. District families will get more information in an email very soon. Also in February, the Saks United Open Enrollment Window for incoming TK through 8th grade students opens on Monday, February 5. This is an opportunity for your students to apply for enrollment to a different school other than their neighborhood school for the 2425 school other than their neighborhood school for the 2425 school year based on space availability. For more information, families can visit the SAC City Unified School District website where they can apply before the deadline on Friday, February 23rd at 5:00 PM. Also, in preparation for next school year, I would like to invite our families and community to help us select instructional materials for next school year. Sacramento City Unified School District is in the process of adopting new instructional materials for secondary world languages. All this month, teachers, students, parents, guardians, and the community members have the opportunity to review and provide input about the instructional materials being considered for adoption. Digital materials are available for you to review on our website, or you can visit the Serna Center to review printed copies in the second floor lobby during our business hours. And speaking of digital technology, I would like to take a moment to welcome and introduce our new Chief Information Officer, Tim Rocco. I forgot to do this at our last board meeting. Tim has a wealth of experience working in instructional technology for many, for many school districts, most recently at Nevada Unified since 2018, where he guided their technology needs during distance learning. We are very fortunate to have his expertise and counsel here at SAC City. Thank you for joining us to support the students and staff at SAC City Unified. So let's please welcome Mr. Rocco. Finally, I am excited to announce our first SAC City Unified Community Fair in 2024. It will be held at Suyu Elementary on Saturday, March the 9th, from 10 until 1:00 PM. Please join us for free meals by the central kitchen and receive free grocery boxes from the Sacramento Food Bank and Family Services. There will be entertainment and many community resources available, including our Human Resources Department, to share SAC City job opportunities. There will also be free bike repairs by Sacramento-area bike advocates. This event is free, open to the entire community. I hope to see you at Suyu on March the 9th. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. For the president's report, I'm just going to share out a little about the history of Black History Month. And I, it's kind of a, do you know, did you know that Black History Month is not a national holiday? It's actually a day that was created to support the study of black people. So there's a group, it's actually called the Association for the Study of African-American Life. And this is where we began with Carter G. Woodson in 1926. Wasn't until 1976 that it became a month. So between '26 and '76, it was just a week. We do honor Black History Month, but I want to highlight the theme of Black History Month, which is African-Americans and the arts. That's all 2024 is talking about with regard to black history. So, you know, I have some hopes and dreams that we're doing a lot of improvements and augmentations to our visual and performing arts, and any bit of education that can be shown to our students regarding African-Americans and the arts would be fantastic. So I'm just going to read a couple of dates for you because it's not necessarily necessary for me to provide the education, but only to give you a tidbit so that you can do the research yourself. Memphis, Tennessee, 1892. Rosewood, Florida, 1923. New Orleans, Louisiana, 1900. Seneca Village, New York, that's on Lenape Land, 1857. Tulsa, Oklahoma, 1921. We have had sit-ins, boycotts, walkouts, strikes, all in support of our freedom and our ability to express ourselves as human beings in this country. It still continues to be an effort. And there's a young lady, her name was Phyllis Wheatley. And I say frequently that I have Phyllis Wheatley moments. I experience having to redefine myself as a black woman, not because I don't know something, but because someone does not trust that I might. So to all my sisters out there who have had their Phyllis Wheatley moments, please know that I am hoping and praying that we can stop having those and actually be our original selves and show our skills and talents. And to close, I am truly looking forward to our district and our community working together to create safe spaces for people of color, black women, men, regardless of, you know, whether you're the LGBTQIA or just wherever you identify, if you are black, we need to have an arena where we are able to be in a safe space to be ourselves. So to my dear colleagues, I'm sure I'm going to be pushing that a lot. But frequently, Black History Month is not the happiest month for me because it is a recognition that we have one month to talk about what we still ain't got and what we still have to fight for. It is frustrating when, you know, liberty and justice for all doesn't apply to all. So I will close with that and move on to student member report. Ms. Segura.
I'm just going to give a small update on SAC. We have started kickstarting our initiatives and our research process of everything and have formed our groups within our initiatives. So that's exciting. We, our goal this semester is to sporadically present to you guys throughout the semester, hopefully getting it earlier in this year rather than last year where I believe we presented around May or June. We're hoping to start it a little bit earlier this year, possibly around April, possibly earlier. So we're excited about that. It's going well, and we are on a very steady track. Yeah.
Thank you very much. And 11.4 information sharing by board members. Let's light up that board. We're going to start with Ms. Jean. Let's go.
So I had the privilege of getting to attend both our LCAP meeting this last month. I was appointed, or I believe it was appointed, to be the liaison from the board to LCAP. And I also went ahead and peeked in on our first Community Schools Advisory Committee meeting. The energy in the room is just amazing. It's so incredible to see community members that are willing to give up their evenings, come in on rainy, stormy nights for boxed dinners, and have really rich conversations about our schools and our students and our dreams and our hopes. The Community Schools first meeting, the energy in that room was phenomenal, to just see all the educators from credentialed and classified and administrative folks coming together with community members and parents. And a bunch of students were in the room, which just created an incredible space. And they are excited and they are invested, and it's just wonderful. And so from my experience in those two rooms, I actually have two asks for our president/ exec committee/ board. One, I would really love clarity on what the thoughts were around being liaisons, just like what is our role in that room? Because we're not a part of that committee. So we're observing, and I don't want to, you know, inappropriately move into a space. And I want to know what it is in terms of like reporting back and bringing info. Like, how do we create true alignment from the work we're doing as the elected seven of our community with the incredible work of our volunteers and our staff and our students in these rooms? So I'd love clarity for liaison. Sorry, you're not liking the word clarity tonight. So I would love some parameters for what it means to be a liaison from our board to those communities. And then my second ask is, as I look at this list of district advisory committees, I'm not sure if Community Schools meets the parameters for that list, but if it does, I would love to suggest we add the Community School Advisory Committee to this list of meetings. That way, the folks that are in that room could come and report to us and be invited to bring their voice to our conversation as well. So those are my two asks. Thanks.
Newly noted. You're talking about, say, like, district advisory committee, adding them to...
Adding the Community Schools Advisory Committee to our list of reports.
Okay. I'm not saying yes, but I'm saying...
Yes, no, I'm just asking, my first one was, who decided who got on that list? Like, what it took to get on the list? And if we know what that is, if Community Schools meets that, I'd love to add them.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Kayata.
So first, in response to a couple of the public comments we had about the CONCAP process, just wanted to share some information that was shared with the board. A small first step, but a big first step is that the district is going to be forming a working group to look into that. And I, for one, I'm very excited that we're going to start doing this work. It's not very many kids who are affected by this, but the ones who are, it's a big deal for them and their families, as well as their teachers and principals. So I'm really excited. You know, it's going to be, it's going to take time, but we're taking this seriously, and this is part of the new, you know, climate in this district, which I'm very excited for. And then I also wanted to share that last week, I had the opportunity to go up to Sly Park and visit some of the students up there and talk to some of the teachers up there. I did not realize the heck credential teachers. This facility is so much better than I thought it was going to be. I didn't grow up in Sacramento when I was in elementary school, and I went to a camp in the Adirondacks in New Jersey or Pennsylvania, and it was nothing like this. So I am really excited that we get to send our kids there. I know that all the kids got to go at no cost this year and that that, you know, was a one-time decision, to the extent we can continue looking at ways to make it so every kid, regardless of income or affordability, can go there. I think this is just a critical part of, you know, the education that we give our kids here in SAC City, and I'd like to just uplift that. But again, thank you to the people at Sly Park for hosting me. I had an amazing time.
Thank you. Sly Park is awesome. Okay. Any other share? Woo doo doo doo. There we go. Mr. Rhodes.
Very briefly, I also had the opportunity to go to our Native American group and talk to the parents there and listen in as their liaison. And I do believe, I agree with my colleague, I remember Jean, around also placing some of those people on the district advisory committees. When you don't see them there, I think that they should be. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Singh.
All right. A lot of I agrees. So just to jump on the CONCAP piece, I remember when a parent from Tahoe Elementary came here, very passionate about the process that had gone down. And I actually went to go meet that teacher that had been moved during back-to-school night. So I really do appreciate that that process is moving forward, and I also agree it would be nice to get updates. And the parameters would be great because I'm excited that I am one of those liaisons for one of our groups. And I would love to start showing up, Terrence, I'll be there, and report back to the community on what we're learning, right? My other shout-out is really, you know, on Black History Month, I think we had a long conversation and a lot to think about when it comes to what we're doing in our district for black students. But I've always said that representation does matter, and we're in a district where we have a black superintendent, we have a black board president, we have a black second vice president, we have black folks who are on our staff, we have Yvonne, we have Consey, we have so many folks. So the kids out there do have something to look to. The kids out there are looking that we have actual representation, that we can all make it, and we have the right people in power to do that. So I really do want us to think about that positive piece. I know that when we think about these months, and I've said this even for Sac History Month or Heritage Month, you get a month because you don't have the year, right? You're not really ingrained into the history the way that you should be. So we will continue to push, and we will continue to talk about that in every way possible. And as I've said before, and I'll continue to say this until we see some peace, I just want to see a ceasefire. I just want us to really find some peace in this world. And I'll leave it at that.
Well said, sir. Moving on. 12.0 Consent Agenda is an action item. Public comment? Do we do public comment? I'm going to keep asking on every single number. I'm just going to say, "Public comment?" Okay. There just seems to be one where it isn't, and it just kind of, like, I keep asking anyway. Anyway, you're going to say there are none. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Second?
Okay. Okay. That's a good one. Okay, thank you. So we'll put that to vote. Student preferential?
Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
They're adorable. Item 13.0, future board meetings, dates and locations. It will be read slowly and deliberately for those who are writing and need to reference their calendars. February 15, 2024, 5:00 PM. Closed session, 6:30. Open session, here at Serna Center, 5735 47th Avenue, Community Room. March 7, 2024, 5:00 PM. Closed session, 6:30. Open session, here at Serna Center, 5735 47th Avenue. Thank you all for coming this evening. Item 14.0, okay, Mr. Singh, and all in favor?
Aye.
All right.